Great, let's do this. I call the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission to order for Monday, May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Record that all are present. We'll move on to Article Two, the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the like. The United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands. On a nation under our individual. Completely.
Good evening, gentlemen.
See you.
Yes, all right, we have a minor housekeeping item I want to make sure I bring up, we have a confidential email or confidential memo from our attorney that was sent to you. If we wish to discuss that, we will need to go into closed session and we will do that. Around Article Eight, so that it remains confidential, however. If we don't, I'm just telling you now to think about it, if we don't need to discuss it, we don't need to go into closed session and. I'm always partial not to go into closed session because the room is hot, so. Think about it. I know that member Brunel had some clerical. Administrative questions that he can take up with Brian offline, but if there are substantive questions around that memo. You know, it just takes one of us to say we'd like to discuss it, so just give that some thought and I will.
I do have an issue.
All right, so all right, so you've been so, all right, remember all the heads, no problem, we will, we will go. To closed session after Article Seven. And I will let you call or let you make a motion to bring us to. Close session, so, but remember to do that after seven, please.
Seven, okay.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna move on to Article Three, and do I hear a motion to approve the current agenda? So move, move by member Rissy, support, supported by member Ingle, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, we'll move on. Article Four, disclose any conflict of interest, does anyone wish to disclose a conflict of interest?
No, let's do another question, I don't know where to put it.
Sure.
I noticed that Wendy's no longer, I know that she's the. Treasurer now, but it's, so now she's no longer.
She is no longer on the planning commission, we can have but one board member and we have.
Okay.
One distinguished one, but I wasn't.
Yes. I guess we'll keep Timmy.
So, yeah.
They are wrestled.
So are we gonna backfill the position?
Yeah, we, we earn out as much as the supervisor will.
That's her, yes.
She's looking for somebody now, so we have candidates. I don't, have we posted it yet?
Working with Ben's. Replacement.
Got it.
So we'll get it to Wendy as soon as we can.
Yeah, wait, wait a minute.
So Ben, Ben is, Ben is leaving, now the township has taken a position with Kent County to run the Parks Department. This has been especially trying for Timmy, so please give him thought.
Well, I know that you and Ben were close.
It's been difficult.
Yeah, it's been hard.
Okay, moving on. All right, nobody has to disclose a conflict of interest, let's move to Article Five. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the March twentieth meeting? Typically hear from the secretary.
I do have some changes, but we can.
All right, let's hear it, let's go.
All right, Article Seven. Six, sixth paragraph, last name. Is the N S M of the wood should be capitalized, small thing. It's just a clerical error there. Article Eight, ninth paragraph.
There was discussion?
Correct. If you read that sentence. It says was appropriate extend. I'm assuming that should say was inappropriate extension, does that?
Was appropriate to extend to of the future, I don't.
Did not read right here.
Can you go back to the tape and review that, Brian?
Yeah.
I hope it's, I, I. The clerk kind of got after me for not having minutes to them quickly, so I hope we don't, I hope it didn't come at the table with that and just have him validated on the tape.
Absolutely, just to make sure, because it doesn't even grammatically, it doesn't read well, and it doesn't make sense as, so I have no problem with making those changes and approving the minutes.
Okay, just those two changes?
That's it.
Okay, so I hear a motion for member Angle with those two changes, one of which Brian will do afterwards to approve the minutes, do I hear support? Support, support, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none? We'll move on, member Moxley supported that, I should have stated that. Okay. Article Six, we will acknowledge any visitors or those who are wishing to speak. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Okay, I suspect you're here for the next thing, all right, easy enough, we'll move on, Article Seven, case number twenty-three dash three, seven, five, eight, Scott Gerlings.
Good evening, Brian.
Evening.
All right. So here tonight, the applicant's requesting a site plan approval for an expansion of an existing parking lot. At fifty-seven eighty-four Craft Avenue, a site plan was approved in March of two thousand and twenty-two for a one hundred thousand square foot building expansion. As well as sixty-seven parking spaces. As construction of the addition nears completion, the applicant has determined that additional spaces are needed based on the potential use of that building. So the applicant should be able to provide more information regarding that if needed. The parking lot expansion will add one hundred thirty-two spaces on the southern end of the site. In order to maintain the required twenty-foot buffer yard, a boundary line adjustment is proposed to move the property line twenty feet to the south. And that would need to be approved before construction begins. My staff report, I noted that landscape plantings will need to be added along the south property line. A landscape plan was submitted late this afternoon, so I will review that and confirm that it meets all the township requirements and checks those boxes. Similarly, a revised site plan was submitted this afternoon that eliminates that added curb cut, so the new site plan does meet the requirements regarding the number of allowed driveways. So the entrance to the new parking lot will come off that existing eastern driveway. Instead of adding a new curb cut, so it'll come off that one there and eliminating that added curb cut down to the south. The stormwater detention basin to the south will be enlarged to accommodate the increased impervious surface. The township engineers reviewed and approved the plans pending the submittal and recording of a revised stormwater maintenance plan. The fire department has also reviewed and approved the plans. At this time, recommending approval of the site plan for the parking lot expansion with the six conditions that are listed in the staff report.
Any questions for Brian?
Yes. Can you clarify the, I missed it, sorry, the curb cut, so in your memo, you'd said that there was basically only two.
Only two permitted.
Two permitted, did you just clarify that to say there was more permitted now or?
No, they're eliminating the proposed third one, so now access will be off of an existing one, eliminating the third one.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Brian, with the. Boundary line adjustment. So are they buying that property from the neighbor and then just? Readjusting the line that way, or how is that?
Yeah, and I believe in, they have to maybe, you have to speak to, I believe the owner owns both of those properties, so.
Do they, okay.
So it's easy enough for them to move that twenty feet, but they'll have to go through our lot split. Application, which is just an administrative review and should be easy enough for them to do.
All right, and the other question, now maybe it was a different one. Site grading for the pond.
Thoughts are good.
Yeah.
Yes, I had one other one, as still kind of a newbie here, looking over the. The paperwork. I'm assuming that the lot that's being added is primarily for. Loading docks, so, so large trucking. And my assumption therefore is that the smaller lot is employee parking. Is it typical to provide an accessway for the employees, it seems like. As presented here, it looks like they're walking through the trucking lanes. Is that something we ever consider, is that beyond our scope, or how is that kind of addressed, like the safety aspect?
Sure, that's probably a little beyond our scope in terms of interior parking lot reconfiguration, at least the zoning ordinance, you know, doesn't speak to how it has to be addressed, so it's a little more on the applicant preference and design.
Oh yeah, that was my thing, Scott, you had raised your hand, so.
I did, I'm trying to. The elevations, these two parking lots are at different heights, it looks like, right? And I thought it said on the one, on the one drawing, there's six steps between the parking lots, but when I look at the gradients, it looks like there's only about. Maybe a foot or two difference here, but I'm.
Maybe we can have applicants speak a little bit more to that, but yeah, I believe it was only a few feet difference in between.
Those really small stairs, maybe?
One inch at a time.
I just wanted to make sure there's a big retaining wall there or something, I know somewhere in this township, we have a really big retaining wall with no railing on it. Hate to have a repeat of that. But it looks like. It doesn't look like it's a significant drop.
It looks like it's only a couple feet.
Yeah.
And then when the applicant can maybe confirm that for us.
Okay. All right, I got another one. Yeah, yeah, the site grading for the pond. Has that been approved by the owner to the south, or is it the same owner?
Same owner, yeah.
Okay.
So I'll just make, get that an email from him confirming that it's, he still owns both of them, but.
Okay, shaking his head, yes, which indicates to me, and when he comes up, we can confirm that with you.
Yes, number nine. And the one last one, I'm not really sure if it's germane, but. Looking at the legend on these prints, it shows that kind of. New cement versus old cement, but when you pull this up in Regis, it looks like some of what they're turning this new cement is already showing in the Regis from two thousand and twenty. So is it being re-cemented, or why is just the prints are a little off?
We want to save that for the applicant.
Okay.
Because we'll bring them up.
Okay, sure.
Unless you know the answer, of course, but I didn't.
No.
Yeah. All right, fair enough, does anybody have any other questions for Brian, we can always pull them back up after we're done with the applicant.
Good, thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Come on forward, I could get your name and address in relation to the project.
I'm Jack Barrow with Niederwald, I'm a civil engineer on the project, our client Scott Gerlings is. Coming in hot from out of the country, so he couldn't make it tonight, he intended to, but he apologized, he didn't, his flight didn't quite connect. So the user is train, at the time we put the site plan together and got site plan approval, there wasn't a tenant yet, or. There were several tenants that came and went, he's finally signed an agreement with Train, the HVAC supplier. And they needed. A lot of employee parking, so this, this lot is just going to be for employees, and the design of it was set up this way, because. This part of the site is all loading docks, and then this part of the site is all loading docks. We do have some convenience parking for. Office staff, but the majority of the warehouse and. Production staff that are going to be in the building, they didn't want them to be parking and. Driving through where all the truck turn movements are going to be happening here, so what we did is. Took the employee lot and kind of separated it out, so that executives and key office staff would use this parking lot. And then the main employee parking lot would be here, and then the steps through, there's about a three-foot grade difference between the two parking lots at most where the catch basins occur. So that existing parking lot in the building. Were built last year. And what we did with the site plan is just took the approved site plan from. Previously and just added this on to it, so that's why the pavement here shows as proposed and the concrete here shows as proposed is because. It was proposed last time we were here, but it has been constructed since, it was built last, finished last summer. So we're showing six steps, because at those particular spots is where the grade difference is the most, but it ranges from about a foot and a half to three-foot difference in grade where the. The, the new parking lot will be higher than what was built last year. And then detention basins, our client owns both pieces, he owns it in two separate entities. I think the south one is under like five-two-eight-four Craft, and the north one's under five-seven-eight-four Craft LLC or something like that, but same person.
Can we get an agreement between the entities then?
We had one before for the shared, he has got a. There's public, City Grand Rapids Public Utilities that come through here, so he's got agreements. With himself in case he doesn't own all of them.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, that say we're sharing in the maintenance of the road, we're sharing in. Yeah, stormwater, all the stormwater. The piece that's on the north. East corner of. Midwest Drive and Craft, that's owned by EQ. They were gonna build there and then they decided to build elsewhere, so they still own this, it's vacant, but they are even party to that stormwater agreement, because some of their water, if they ever developed there, would go into these ponds.
Okay.
So.
Uh, member Rissy.
Uh, thank you, how many tenants are going to be in the building, just the HVAC company?
Yeah, so the existing building is National Tire Warehouse. That was site plan that we brought here in two thousand and nineteen, and then the new building is Train, they take up the whole space.
Okay, so they're gonna take over the whole thing?
Yeah, well, just.
Looking for clarification, because our, okay.
That's what National Tire stays here, so.
Got it.
Demising wall.
Our memo said tire distributor, and you're talking HVAC, so I wanted to get a little clarification, thank you.
Yeah.
Very similar, remember we're not, so for more clarification, so I wasn't here for the previous site plan, so what you're saying is. All this is regarding is the, the lower employee parking lot.
What we're here tonight for is amendment to this previously approved site plan for this, for just this parking lot, yeah, everything up here.
So, so even, even, okay. So the point I raised earlier was covered even more than I thought it did.
Yeah, I probably should have ghosted this out or made that dirt or lighters, because it's already physically built, but.
Yeah. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, I would. Any discussion? Enter with us. Okay.
Yes, just a small one. Unfortunately, it's more of a learning on my part, so I apologize, so is this typical that they'd come in and do a site plan kind of bit by bit by bit? As opposed to kind of strategically?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. I can't believe it's been four years since.
Yeah, it seems like it's been a lot sooner than that.
Yeah, but it was like last night, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask a question, and I think I already know the answer, but Brian, the pond extension is it big enough to accommodate this new second building?
That's what our engineer signed off on, saying it met our stormwater requirements.
I figured, I just wanted to ask the question.
That's concrete, I mean, anytime.
Yes.
Uh, Brian, the new entrance to the added parking lot. Will that come off the other existing parking lot, or will it come off the easternmost curved entrance drive?
It'll come off that easternmost entrance drive to access this new parking lot.
Shifted north.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, trustee Nordhuck.
And Brian, who was our township engineer?
Eric Thorne.
Thank you.
Our current staff.
So there are going to be a lot of additional. Truck traffic, like semi-truck trailer traffic on Craft and then. Midwest Drive. And. And are those? I mean, Craft is rated for it, I'm guessing, but.
Yeah, I suspect Midwest is too.
Probably, have we done?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, that's parts already done, right, we're just.
Yeah.
Yeah, doors is.
Yeah, I don't remember, I, yeah. I just given with the tenants they've got back there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There will be a lot more truck traffic, they have ten loading docks in this, in the new building that trains taking over. But when we build Midwest Drive in two thousand and nineteen, we built that to the county, it's not a public road, but we built it to the county's industrial road standards, so, because we knew it was gonna. Get a lot of use, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Any idea how many employees they're bringing in? I mean ballpark.
Um.
Just out of curiosity.
It was only a few less than the number of spaces that they wanted to have, so they figured nobody was carpooling, and so I don't remember how many spaces we had total, but.
Fantastic.
It was like a hundred and fifty or something like that, it was a big number.
Fantastic. You like that, member Rissy?
Uh, Brian, can you mention to? To our engineer to put his name on the bottom of his memos, so that we know who the author is, based on. Trustee Nordhuck's question, I think that would be good for. I noticed when I scrolled through, I specifically looked to see if it was him or not, but it just kind of ended, it didn't show any kind of signature line in the.
Yeah, he has it at the top, but I can recommend he had a signature line at the bottom.
I think it'd be, I think it would look.
Sure.
Good if, if he did that. Doing good work, you should sign off on it, take credit for it.
It was at the top, though, correct?
It was, yeah, but it's in a memo form, so to myself from our staff.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
But signature line could help too.
Must have missed the top.
Yeah, it's right there, A R C.
Okay. I was looking at the bottom. Maybe it was, I was trying to figure out if that was the end of the memo, or if we were missing another page.
Should annotate page numbers, that would be helpful, yes. All right, any other questions, thoughts for Brian, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion on case number twenty-three, thirty-seven, fifty-eight, I'm gonna need to get glasses. For approval with the recommendations, the six recommendations outlined by staff.
Okay, I hear support.
Support.
Support from member Angles, and the motion was made by member Rissy, support from member Angle, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, before we go to Article Eight, member Roland?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go to closed session to discuss the Foster Swift. Memo about the livestock family zoning regulations.
Right, this is marked attorney-client privilege, can I hear your support for that motion? Support, support from member Angle.
Chairman, I just wanted to note that I believe this would be pursuant to MCL fifteen-two-six-eight-H.
Thank you.
Consider material exempt from discussion and disclosure by state or federal statute. Which is similar to what we did back when the warmies case came up.
Yeah, no, thank you, and then, yeah, just that we can ensure that this does stay privileged, okay. Well, oh yes, thank you, can I get a, can you do a roll call real quick, Brian?
I can. I'm off my list here, member Nord Hook.
Yes.
Member Reese.
Yes.
Member Moxley.
Yes.
Member Nordike.
Yes.
Member Richardson.
Yes.
Member Angle.
Yes.
Member Bruno.
Yes.
Member Roland.
Yes.
All in favor, so we will move, we'll move to a closed hearing, go to the conference room.
Frustrated with this whole process, all of it's been a challenge.
I'll try to stay on record amount.
Or just do it. Posing the smaller steps for us to stay. Like the previous, so he has six steps and I wanted three to see everyone else wants more steps.
So I make a motion to come out of closed session and come back into open session.
One second. Support.
Support. Motion made by member Roland, supported by member Angle. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Move on. The action, we provided action for staff to follow up with legal and we will table. Article eight pending that action to a future meeting. Moving on to article nine. We need to schedule a public hearing for the master plan amendment. Brian, you want to give us some more context?
Yep. Yeah, just briefly. So the master plan amendment went to the township board and they did approve it for distribution for the forty two day public review period. So after their review period, the next step is for the planning commission to hold a public hearing. After which you could adopt their proposed amendment or send it back to the board for final approval. So the earliest the public hearing could be held would be at the June five planning commission meeting. And so then just tonight, we're looking forward that's formally setting a date for the public hearing.
Anybody have any concerns with having it on June five? I have heard from the board members that there is definite interest and we'll call it the Roland amendment where we extend out to craft. So. Something for everybody to consider.
So I will not be here on the fifth.
You will not be here in the fifth. So will we have quorum? Are you are you comfortable? Do you want to be here for the public hearing?
I think you guys will do the right thing.
Extend out to craft.
Extend our call the way to craft.
So, so I went to the township board meeting and I got up and public comment and said, hey, you kind of.
It's very professional.
Holes and all that's coming towards you. You know, it was a close vote. We think you should extend it, kick it back to the planning commissioner. You guys do it. Go all the way to craft and rezone it. Or not rezone it. It's a change it to away from future. Light industrial to just agricultural. So remember we like what you were saying, all the way to craft.
Didn't we just approve it?
You're welcome. After the public hearing, we have the right to amend it and set it back.
But didn't we just make an approval for a dental office to be right there in that corner?
To have discussion on.
Does that affect what? No, does that affect their PUD or anything?
It is, it is there on the, it's east of craft, along with the Pepsi bottling company there. So, right.
That would not be, it would just be along.
Along their lot line?
Yeah.
And again, we can.
Cause they're on this side of thirty sixth street. So.
But they, well, yeah, that's not up for discussion tonight or anything left. You don't get that.
So anyway, that's my fault. I shouldn't have gone down that.
Okay.
I, I only mentioned it for people to give us thought of this all. So.
I'm giving it a thought. Yeah.
All right, moving on to.
Is that?
That.
Can we have a motion just to set that public hearing?
Oh, do we need a motion for that?
I just to have.
I'd like to hear a motion to hold the meeting on June fifth. I hear that from member Nordhook. Motion made by member Nordhook to hold public hearing on June fifth. Do I hear support? Remember Rissy? Can I hear all those in favor of here of having our public hearing on June fifth? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none will move on to article ten. The Grand Valley Metro Council Airport Access Study. Which Brian provided us in the packet will give us some further context and dialogue.
Yeah. I mean, this is just a little more informative here for you. So in your package, that final report from the airport access study. And just providing this group with a chance to review that document. So they did have the public. Open house here at the Wisner Center to allow residents to review and ask questions on the plan. And then reviewing the document, there are a few references to the township stance of limiting the amount of growth on the east side of the airport now. And then I believe the plan is to share this report with the board at their next meeting and kind of the same style here. So if there's any questions or anything like that, I can. Do my best to answer those.
Does anybody have any questions? Remember or not?
Wow, I, I've, if I've been critiqued as going too much into detail, this is, this is going to be a suicide mission because. I have read this now three times cover to cover. And as beautiful as it is and as much data as there is in this. I've never read any something more incoherent. They make a decision, a conclusion, and they say, here's the data that supports it. And the data is a complete dipole to it. And I could probably go through a list of a hundred points, but. Highlighting a couple, and I, I don't know. What this agenda item really is, you said to review it. But in one section, they say ninety seven percent of all the traffic into and out of the study zone is on a local roads. Then the next sentence is therefore we need an off ramp off the expressway. That makes zero logical sense because if they're coming, so we're going to build an off ramp for the three percent of the traffic. Then in another section that they talk about. That, let me get some of this straight. Oh. They give a map of where all the traffic comes from. And if you look at it, it's all to the west of the airport, Muskegon, west and south. And then the next sentence says, therefore, we need a second entrance from the north and east.
It's interesting you say that because in their, their presentation that they did in front of the planning commission. I brought up to the gentleman that his slide showed that the majority of the. Resident feedback was they wanted a secondary entrance on the west side of the airport and the slide indicated exactly as you say, so they felt they needed. An access point on the east side of the airport. It's like, well, the data you show in your survey doesn't say, so oh, that's an error, he says, it's, you know, it was a mistake. Well, then they went to the township board and it pointed it out again, township board, because it was the same. You know, it was what four or five weeks later, they still had the same slide with the data being flawed. And this is the same example. At this point, I don't know if it's a typo or if the data really. Really is slanted in the wrong direction. I don't really know.
Trying to deceive.
Straight answer.
Well, there, there would have to be like literally hundreds of typos because I could, I, we could really, I could go through this sentence by sentence and decompose all the, all of the would appear to be errors. I'm trying to think of some of the others. And again, I didn't, I don't want to belabor it here, but we could literally go through it. There's, there's another section that basically says. There's commu- broad community support for an off ramp off the expressway. Based on the survey. But if you look at the survey, it says, which of these off ramps do you prefer? Well, of course, all the respondents picked an off ramp because you had to pick which off ramp you prefer. It wasn't the question, do we need an off ramp?
You think they were steering people?
I don't want to necessarily make those. I'm just. I, I want to leave the motion out of it. I don't, I want to be, or I want to be emotionally intelligent. I will just say as an engineer and a data scientist, they have a great set of data. They have conclusions that have zero correlation to the data presented. Over and over and over and over again.
After the data was collected or were the conclusions first and then data was collected?
I would, I, that would be me surmising, but I guess if I'm allowed to surmise, it looks to me because I see the word need in here and I see like word support. I think it's wants. I think someone hired someone to collect data. And they said, go get me some data and someone got them data, but no one took the effort to make sure does the data support what I want. They had a want, they hired someone to get data, they paired the two together and said, task done. But if you read it. It's, it's bad.
One of the things that is important to remember though, when you read this is that the survey was not necessarily residents of Cascade.
Right.
But of the whole region.
Yeah.
And that does. You know, that does give you a little different perspective if you, if you. Think about it from that.
That's fine. They can, they can put an exit in.
Can't with that.
But, but here's, here's an example. So the very first document that they publish is basically the technical memorandum as to why we're undertaking this exercise. Cause I, I had to take a step back and say, why? Executive summary for their very first public document. The Grand Rapids Airport Access Study was initiated by the Grand Valley Metro Council, GVMC. Because current access to the airport central core is limited to the Patterson Avenue, Forty Fourth Street, Ous- Ousma Boulevard intersection. And lacks direct interstate access. They've already drawn the conclusion. This is commissioned because they don't have direct interstate access. So I'm guessing their conclude, their results are going to be, we need directors, like, that's not a. That's like saying, what is your favorite flavor of cherry ice cream? Well, cherry ice cream. You've already answered it. In your mission statement, you answered the question.
I think. disregard the data. This is what they want. Yeah.
I think some of it, if, if, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, trustee Nordhoff, it is DOA anyways, it's going to require a partnership from our board and our board has been. Conclusive that we support a entrance from the thirty sixth street expressway outside of that, we're, we're not supportive.
Yeah, there's good support to come off of the thirty sixth street exit, which is already in place. And all they gotta do is cut a little hole in the fence and they're in. Going through the airport. But to put all these new exits through our township. It's not, it's kind of dead on arrival.
And I think that somebody I thought maybe it was even the supervisor that spoke to M dot. They said, yeah, we're not, we, we don't have the demand for an additional. Off ramp outside of the thirty sixth street. And now that they won't be putting industrial. And on the south side of the airport, right? There'll be less than that. So go ahead, remember or not.
But I'm confused there because again, I, I don't go to enough meetings. I apologize, but. I've heard that several times with this board. I think Wendy was referring to that previously. I came to the open house and I didn't see anybody feel amazingly, I was surprised. I kind of sat back and listened. I didn't see support from our citizens for even the thirty sixth street direct tunnel into the airport. No. I'm hearing that there's support from that. Is there any support for any?
There's, I think there's acceptance of that. That might be a better way to put it, right? Like, hey, if they've got to have something.
But why do they kind of something? That's what I'm missing.
Yeah. Well, because that's what the, the project was, right? Was the pit one? That the one we picked because.
Yeah, yeah, but here's the thing, like, is, is their business going to hurt? Are less people gonna fly out of the Grand Rapids Airport because they don't have an exit? Off the highway? I think not. I mean, it's the only airport i- in the metro area that, you know.
The forty fourth street. Entrance has been serving them for sixty years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So for the next sixty years, we're going to need another way. We're out and thirty sixth street's the most logical, however.
Hold on, here's my question.
Why, Timmy?
That's limiting. I, my argument being maybe I'm sort of this completely wrong. For the sixty years, the forty first street has been. Sufficient. What do we need for the next sixty, sixty? A light rail going down the median on forty fourth into, let's look at Denver. I asked the question of. Show me an airport has a direct ramp into the airport. They couldn't answer me one.
No.
I can give you a bunch that, that I fly through, but I hear what you're saying.
They are adding a second.
Could you, I like the research. I couldn't find any that.
Austin has it.
Detroit kind of does. I mean.
You gotta get on surface streets in Detroit. I was just there. LAX, all surface streets, nothing more near an expressway.
Now, Austin is a, a direct end. I believe Dallas is a direct end.
Miami, I think is the direct end.
Yeah, I, I'd have to.
There's other, there's other things in this report where it says the bicycle pedestrian path and they can do that now. It's their property. All they gotta do is do it.
How many bikers are taking a flight?
Nobody, but they can do it. We're not standing in their way. They own that boulevard going all the way down. And it hooks right to the forty, Kentwood, the forty fourth street there sidewalks. They can do it. And the bus.
Yeah.
They can do the bus. We don't care if they do the.
Thirty sixth street is their land as well, if I'm not.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying they can do a bus tomorrow. If they pick up the phone and call grad and say, hey, I want a bus for every half hour out here, they can do it.
Yeah, remember, remember, Rissy.
Well, one thing that kind of stunned me on the thirty sixth street direct access. Is that they are proposing not only pretty heavy price tag, one hundred and fifty seven million. But the relocation of the CSX railroad right away.
Saw that.
To the south.
I saw that.
There are money there.
No, to the, yeah.
To the north.
North.
The north.
To get the roadway.
Right.
Good luck doing that.
Well, I think that's in the plans too, because I think that's probably in the plans too, because they want to shift that runway. When they reconstruct that runway, it's going to be a larger runway to get that. To get the railroad further down because it looked like they're relocating an awful lot of rail for, for the, for a tunnel to go through, you know, light up the tunnel. I think it's really for the runway now.
Hundred million of that hundred.
I don't care with it. But I, I did like on, I think it's page nineteen of their study. I, I like the sentence that says, but recent cascade township planning targets less economic growth in this area. And so I think that's, that's a reference in there is. Because of our conversations about modifying our. Master plan for that region. So that's in reference to an M six and forty eighth street or an M six and sixtieth street interchange, which I know from the residents that were here. Speaking, they don't want to see that.
No.
So, but the other thing that when we met with the airport, they mentioned was that they are working on, and it's going to happen real soon, a second entrance to the west off Patterson. That will help give them. More flexibility if there's ever an accident there or something. I think that's their biggest fear is they only have one way in and out.
Right.
And so if there's a, it, what he described when we met with him was that there was an accident or something and closed down the intersection, the airport's. Bottlenecked at that point. So by having a secondary road that would really, you know, coming out to Patterson, that really would have.
Has that ever happened?
I, I don't know the specifics on that.
Second, I can elaborate on that a little bit. I asked the, I think the chief fireman was here and I actually had one of the people from the airport. It's never happened. If it did, there is a secondary access through the rental car currently. Their solution is to improve safety. To add a second intersection, the one you're talking about, a little to the north running parallel to Ousma. So we have now two intersections back to back. And to take the ramp lanes out.
The swoops.
The swoops out, throw more traffic into the intersection. Widen the intersection and put more turn lanes. So we're going to increase safety by throwing more people into that other center section and then put an intersection immediately adjacent to it. And that's going to make us safer.
They're doing that now. Yes. Right. They're taking the swoops out because they're, I think in the way of the hotel and then also.
There's, there's the county doesn't.
The county said that there's safety issues of the swoops, right? There are some accidents related to merging from the swoops, I think he said. I really like the swoops. I think that's unfortunate, but.
I would agree. I would like to point out two things. I've probably pointed these things out before. I just want to point them out again. There's two off ramps already. There's one at twenty eight. There's one at. Broadmore. That are both. Fewer than three miles from the main entrance.
Yeah, thirty six.
Thirty six.
And. The traffic problem that they've. Pretended is an issue. Is because of all the industrial over there and not because of the airport traffic. In any event. I just wanted to point that out. I, I don't have a point to that other than there's already entrances, there's already off ramps. And there's not really a traffic problem. I've never heard one single person ever say, man, it's really hard to get to the airport.
I, I would, I would pile that on with, I think you're going to start hearing people say it's really hard to get the airport. Because all of the traffic that used to swoop in and swoop out. Is now going to be backed up at that intersection.
Yeah.
So now you're going to have traffic backed up in the airport, trying to get out of the airport. You're going to have traffic backed up trying to get into the airport. Because we've now forced all vehicular top traffic to come to a stop.
Yeah.
So now we have an issue we have to solve. We've created the issue.
Well, I'm. I'm going to be a little contrary. I'd really like the idea of a thirty sixth street off ramp.
I do.
Because it takes the pressure off of all the local roads. You said that that local roads. Currently bear ninety percent, ninety seven percent of the traffic to the airport. I don't think that's a good thing. But it's an accurate number. And of course you got to take a local road to get to the airport. If I can come from Northwest Grand Rapids, jump off at thirty six and come straight into the airport rather than going down Patterson, thirty sixth. Forty fourth street or twenty eighth street. That's a heck of a great deal. This airport wants to be. A regional force. They, and their growth rate's been absolutely incredible. And I think this type of an enhancement. Is going to do nothing but grow that. And it, it brings, it brings dollars to Grand Rapids. It makes it easier for our residents to get to the airport. I think it relieves the pressure on the intersection of forty fourth and Patterson, however you want to describe that. I see this as a win win. I don't think they were ever serious about another. Intersection somewhere else than M six or, or ninety six. But this, if this goes through in five to 10 years, I think that we're in a much better place as a community. And as a region that we are today. I concur. As a chronic user, it would be incredibly nice to take that.
I like the thirty sixth street exit, direct into the airport. Rest of them.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions on this? I don't. Forward. Okay. All right, we, we do have some moving article eleven, some old business that Brian's going to. We're doing it in old business or any other business?
Any other business.
My bad. Does anybody have any old business to cover? I don't think we have any outstanding. All right, we'll move on to article twelve. Any other business? And Brian does have something to.
Yeah, just following up on that email I sent on Friday is Madison and I are working on some kind of comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance and all things that we've noticed that we may want to amend. We're reviewing the strategic plan for what that calls for, for any amendments. And so I just wanted to ask the group, you know, if you have anything in your mind that you've seen, oh, is, you know, this is an issue or we could clean this up. Feel free to, if you have something now, you can let me know or feel free to email us if you think of something along the way and we can kind of add that to our list of things we're looking at.
I have one that's not going to be popular. I have very little exposure so far to the zoning, but one of the. I have one, it's not gonna be popular. I have very little exposure so far to the zoning, but one of the items I didn't feel comfortable with. I brought up at the Michigan Association of Planning Meeting in Frankenmuth. Um, the accessory building that it's not a hard number, it's a number where we start, we do a more critical review. Was felt to be, um, setting us up for failure, and I kind of agree with that. That the way that is written is we're not treating all applicants equally. Um, it's a threshold where we can differentiate and treat each applicant differently. So I think we should look at that to have a number where it is either a limit or it's a sliding scale. But an artificial number that requires special review by definition is giving special treatment. And from what I've. Having them look at it, um, and then having, um, digested what I was taught at that session. I would kind of concur that that seems like an anomaly.
Does anybody else feel that way about the accessory building?
I agree.
Yeah, I do, do.
Let's, let's look at it and see what you come back with and discuss it. Is that, is that acceptable?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I, I don't have the answers, I just.
Can I add one?
Yeah, of course.
I'm trying to think of all, I should think of better notes last eight years. I know that, uh, I brought this up. To your predecessor years ago, but. When you drive down some of our private streets. I feel that we allow them to be about three feet, two to three feet too narrow. Uh, an example of this would be Anderson Woods. If you drive down Anderson Woods, that road is built to the inch, to the, to the width that is allowed. And we don't make them put a gutter on both sides. So they only have gutter on one side of the road, and I think it counts towards the width of the road. When you have two pickup trucks pass each other or a, a truck pulling a trailer and a car passing each other, it is not uncommon for people to just drive on. The homeowner's lawn, because they're afraid the mirrors are gonna touch, and they would if you, if, you know, if you, uh. If you weren't exactly on the, on the side of the road where there's no mailbox. So I just, I feel like maybe in nineteen eighty that made sense. But today, vehicles are, um, almost approaching the legal limit for width, and I think that we should consider. Uh, having our road standards be a little more accommodating for. I don't think you could pass two fire trucks side by side on that road.
Now, do you think it does meet our minimum?
It does, but. Because I used it as a reference and a, and a question to Steve once about another project that was having a road approved to the similar size and. And, uh, it, it does, but I guess my point is I think our minimum is too small. That's my point.
That one is in our private street ordinance, separate from our zoning ordinance, but that's something we can take.
Let's look at it. I think that's a really valid.
Candles as well. A lot of the candles are, those are too narrow. Condos, the roads are too narrow.
The roads in them.
The lanterns is a, a narrow one, it's an example. I think that's condos, isn't it?
Yes, lanterns is, but that's one way. So, you know, and that's, and that's a, a perfect example. And when you look at it, you're like, well, this is one way, but yeah, but now put two-way traffic on it.
Yeah.
Can I, can I tag on to that somewhat uneducatedly, but I know Mr. Richardson would be supportive of this. Can we also look at, and I don't know if this is within our own, why do we do so many private streets? I like your, the supposed street leading to this behind Walmart. You kept calling references to the supposed street.
It's not a street.
Today, it's, it's pretty tragic.
Why, why do we have supposed streets? At what point does the street become a? Why don't we have more? Public's not the right word. I need that education. We, we do a lot of private streets. Why do county roads or something? Like, why? How do we make that road behind or running into the light that goes into the Keymark Park, I was, Walmart parking lot? Why isn't that a real road?
You mean a county road? Because they had that, then the county would have to take it on. They've pushed back or not wanted to, or there's issues with that. The county standards.
So if it was built correctly, they could take it over?
Well, if you look at like. Let's say Target, there's a street that goes around a parking lot that has a couple entrances from that street that rings it. Inside that parking lot is all the little, you could drive down any lane in the parking lot. The Walmart one, that street is the edge of the parking lot.
I, I get your complaint, and I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to. I'm agreeing with you, and what I'm saying is, is. Is there something we can do as a planning commission to make more of our streets? Up here, if nothing else, to be a county road, make up the bar. Is that kind of what you're saying? Because so many streets that I drive on nowadays, it's like. I'm using your word. I drive in, I'm using, oh, this is Mr. Richardson's supposed street. We have a lot of supposed streets.
We do. And then that, also that second entrance we talked about that goes.
I don't know a better way to say it. Somebody please help me.
There was a second entrance to that street that goes through the Subaru parking lot, like right up to the edge of the building.
So what I'm hearing is you would like to see more of our streets meet the county standard.
Yes.
For construction. And our standard is maybe a little out of date. So it sounds like we're all on the same page here that we just need to take a.
Review.
Also look at our private road stand ordinance.
I would like to also tag onto this one last time about Butrick. Um, the part specifically north of Cascade Road. I guess all the way up to. Grand River Southeast. That whole stretch, however many miles that is, three, four. It's way too narrow for the amount of traffic that's on there now, and then it's again, not flat. And. It needs to be. I drive down that all the time, so I, I feel.
It is, that's a rough one.
Roller coaster.
They're getting this, this summer, they're going to redo Grand River down to Thornapple, right? Bass State Park. That's on the agenda this, this summer, I believe.
I think it was that northern part.
That's the, so they're not doing the part that goes up the hill and. Is the road coaster.
Right.
Yes, I'm actually.
Question from Madison. I brought up the issue about that property at the corner of Grand River and Bolt. Anything further on that?
It's a junkyard.
It's, it's been a junkyard for fifty years.
With some cleanup.
There was a company there. Run by there.
The grass and all the growth. They just mowed it all. So now. It's mostly unseen structures. Of what we want.
I drive by it every other day and it just. It's a, it's a junkyard. I mean, not only the old farm tractors, but a lot of other rusted junk. Uh, building blocks, you know, cement blocks, trailer that's unused. Yeah, just one thing after another for three hundred feet.
Don't we already have an ordinance that states that vehicles must be operable? Or enclosed in like a garage or a pool barn? You feel that we could maybe start doing some sightings, uh, in the next thirty days? Is that reasonable?
Yes, I think we'd start with our usual one, contacting the property owner and working with them.
Yeah, forgive me for, uh, circumventing your process, but can, would that process start? I know that. Member Maxi's brought this up a few times, so.
Yep, I, I would like to see the fines doubled every thirty days too. If the, if the person doesn't. Take care of it within thirty days, your next fines double. If you don't take care of it thirty days after that, it's doubled again.
Let's, let's start their process and have them report back if that's all right, um, on every meeting until we, we get there. Is that, is that reasonable? I don't want to. Step on your toes, so.
Thank you, Madison.
Okay, um. For any other business, uh, Timmy, I'll call you for a minute. We had a, we have a change coming with our township manager. Any updates there?
Yes, Vince Fazey submitted his resignation. I think his last day is May twenty two. So our committee is working to find a replacement.
Who was on the, I, I know who is, but for the purpose of everybody here.
Supervisor Lusperance is on the committee with Wendy Corsange and myself.
First meeting was today, right?
Katie from, uh, Human Resources is also there, so there's four of us.
Do we have any internal candidate?
You expect to replace him immediately or put an interim in place, or is that something you're still considering?
Find a qualified candidate right off the bat, we'll go with it. If we can't, we're gonna have to do, uh, just a temporary help.
As long as you, as long as you brought up, Wendy, can you give, for those who are not, no, can you elaborate on that as well? She's not here today. I've heard there's some quick reference at the beginning.
Yeah, Wendy, uh, Wendy is now our new township treasurer, so she's doing great in that position.
We can have but one board member, and Timmy has already been appointed, so she became ineligible to be a planning commissioner when she became our treasurer.
So that's working out well. And, um. Grace is looking for a replacement for Wendy on the planning commission.
That's gonna be difficult. Wendy spoke up a lot on the planning commission and I think she really provided a lot of, a lot of, um. Insight on everything.
She's gonna do great things as the treasurer.
And also on the.
She will, but I'm saying it's a, it's a loss for us on the planning commission side. It's a gain on the board side, but it's a loss here. It's a big game on the board.
The AC zoning.
She did.
Subcommittee.
She did.
She was a great. Great advocate there.
That was one of the things that was a deciding factor, uh, to bring her on to the, the treasurer position was. Like the thirty, thirty-five committee meetings that she volunteered to do, and how she was up to speed on so many things in the township. So it was kind of a natural move. Bring her up.
Good. She was also a valued member of the Parks Committee as well.
Yeah.
And which was. She's gonna, I, I'm not sure she's leaving there yet, but I'm, I don't think she can stay, because I think there's only one commission member that can stay on that. Correct me if I'm wrong, it to me, but.
We'll find out.
Yeah, so if she can stay, that's great. If she can't. We need a replacement there as well.
She, uh, she's. And with her job of the accounting that she does for her job and stuff, so she, she's a good fit.
Okay, does anybody else have any other business? All right, move on. Uh, do we have any visitors out on Zoom? Addison, all right. I hear a motion to adjourn. Support, but moved by Memmerango and supported by, who they. By member Rissy. All those, please say aye. Anything on the agenda yet for the next meeting?
Okay, yeah, the two public hearings we had, the other canceled meeting.
Okay.
On there, and there might be a few other things.